Good evening, everyone. Welcome to another Candidates Forum tonight at Los Banas City Hall. Tonight, we are pleased to have the candidates for the City Council positions. We have four candidates vying for two seats, and these are citywide elections. Unlike the school district, at this time, they're not by district, they're citywide. So every voter will have the opportunity to select two from among the four excellent candidates that we have here in front of us. My name is John Spivak, and I will be the moderator. And I want to, first of all, begin by thanking the co-sponsors for tonight, to be the Los Banas Enterprise and the Merced County League of Women Voters. I'll be thanking these young ladies in just a second. Representing the Merced County League of Women Voters tonight are Nancy Golds, Kathy Hanson, Lisa Maples, who are in the back room, along with, from Los Banas, Dick and Lynette Gerby. They are our question screeners. And here up in front, our timer, Rachel Hadley. And there's Rachel. She did an excellent job timing for the school candidates forum. So a big thanks to the League of Women Voters. Many of them came from or drove from Merced to be here, just to help us do this in the best way we could. Also want to thank the City of Los Banas for providing the opportunity to broadcast the forum and to allow us to use the City Council chambers. I also want to thank the students of Ms. Elizabeth Stone Grove's government class at Pacheco High School, who are here collecting questions written on index cards from the audience. And they are Ashley, Alyssa, Nancy, and Noemi. And later on today, tonight, at the end, we will applaud all of these folks, as well as the candidates. In the meantime, here, we're asking the audience, actually requiring the audience not to demonstrate or show support or opposition to candidates, or, according to what I have here, they will be escorted out. And I don't know by whom. Probably somebody really, really big, that you wouldn't want to argue with. I don't anticipate that happening. At the end of tonight, we'll have an opportunity to applaud everyone. I want to remind viewers at home, watching tonight, that you can submit questions for the candidates, either by emailing your question to the address at the bottom of the screen, or by calling the phone number at the bottom of the screen. And we would love to have your questions. In fact, we got a couple of questions from folks at home for the school board candidates forum, and that was really good. So I want to now, and then I'm going to, I want to introduce the candidates by name, and then I will go through the rules and the format for tonight. Before I forget, I want to remind the candidates that we are picking up their voices on the microphone, and they're going out, not only to council chambers here, the audience, but also to television land. And we have a hard time, it's very hard to adjust the volume. It kind of messes things up if one person is very soft and one person is very loud. We'll leave the volume the same. If you are a soft-spoken person, we encourage you to kind of lean over and talk into the microphone, to make sure you're heard. So introducing, from my left and the audience's right, the candidates tonight are Scott Silvera, Refugio Yamas, Ray Martinez, and Tom Furia. And I ask all the candidates prior to beginning tonight, if it's okay if I refer to them by first names, as we go around, identify who's answering what question, they all agree, and I appreciate that. I tend to be a kind of informal person. Los Banas tends to be a kind of an informal town, so I thank you for that. And I think it does go a little bit more smoothly during the evening. So here are the format, here are the rules and the format for tonight, and this comes from the League of Women Voters. All candidates participate as part of a single panel. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. The same question is asked to all candidates. And those of you who are writing questions, remember to direct questions to all candidates, not to any one candidate in particular. Questions are asked in random order, determined by the moderator. And that's pretty much how they come to me, from the very nice young ladies from Pacheco High School. Each candidate's response, as well as the closing statements, are timed. The league timer, who is Rachel, will hold up a time card to alert the candidate who is speaking when 30 seconds are up. And there's Rachel, holding up the 30-second card, right there. She does a very fine job of holding up hers. And she will also hold up another card when 10 seconds remain. And then, when time is up, she'll hold up a stop sign. At this point, the candidate needs to end his or her response, and by ending meaning complete the sentence that you're on. And it kind of takes a little while to get into that groove, but you'll get the sense of that. When the stop sign comes up, complete the sentence. Otherwise, either Rachel or I will say stop. I think Rachel will say the stop, louder than I will. Questions that are asked, that are submitted by the audience, whether here or from home, are screened by the League of Women Voters' question screeners, who are in the back room there. And they are screened to eliminate those questions that are unclear, inappropriate to the office, or of a personal or abusive nature. Again, the questions that are presented need to be addressed to all candidates. We may run out of time before all screened questions can be asked. All remaining submitted questions remain with the League of Women Voters and are shredded. Candidates are not given an opportunity for a rebuttal or follow-up response. A candidate may use his or her time during the two-minute closing statement to include any follow-ups. And those are the rules. Does that make sense to all of you, Tom, and Ray, and Refugio, and Scott? Okay. Now, the way we're going to start, in terms of asking questions, is when the first questions come, I already have some questions on cards that have come in by the audience that have been screened, is that we will start, I will pick a name out of the hat of the four, and that person will answer first the first question. When we go to the second question, the next person in line, and we'll be going this way and kind of rotate, will be the first person to answer and so forth. So after I ask a question, I will say, okay, the first person to respond will be whoever it might be. And I think you will all get the hang of it. And that way, we rotate the first person up, which can either be a plus or a minus. First person up is oftentimes the person most remembered, but also is under the gun. They get to come up with an answer the quickest. Yes?
I have a comment about when they start to speak.
I'm sorry, say that again, Rachel?
As a timer...
Okay, the timer, yes, please.
...here's the question. The timing won't really start until you're ready to start talking. So you have to think about the question for a second, or if you have to ask for it to be repeated, that won't count as...
So that's a good point that Rachel said. For those folks who didn't hear it, Rachel actually starts the one minute at the point that the candidate begins to speak. So if you need a few seconds to kind of collect your thoughts and so forth, that doesn't count in the minute. Okay, does that make sense? So does that make sense to everybody on the panel here? Okay. And I think we're ready to begin. I also want to thank, I've got to thank Rick Spalding, who is a person who is operating the audio and video. He is also, he will also remind me, in case I make a mistake in making sure microphones are turned on. And likewise, anybody here on the panel, if for some reason your microphone isn't on, or another candidate you want to remind, let me know. I have no problems with that. I want to make sure this is done as well as possible. So unless there are questions, we are ready for the first question of the night. The first question of the night, and first of all, let me pick, oh yeah, Scott.
Do you want us to buzz in, or are you just going to...
I'm going to click you.
Okay, so we don't...
That's a theory.
Okay.
So hopefully, you don't have to do any buzzing. You don't have to worry about that. I'm the one who's under the gun with technology, Mr. Low-tech guy, me, but I think we can do it. But at the same time, if I don't click you and your microphone doesn't come on, please remind me. So here come some more questions. Great. So the first, I'm going to draw a name out of the hat as to the first person who is going to answer the first question, and that person will be Scott. And then after Scott, we'll rotate around, the next person will be time will rotate like this. And hopefully, I'll be able to keep track of this. So the first question is, "In your opinion, what is our city lacking?"
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind, when we talk about what is the city lacking, is something that I've been speaking about for the last four years, which is, we need livable, meaningful jobs in Los Banas. I'm a very frequent user of the service industry. It makes my life a lot more convenient. But we cannot continue on the course of only offering service jobs in Los Banas. And so one of the things that I'm proud of, that our council's been working on, is an industrial park located at I-5 and 165. And we're in the very preliminary stages, but at build-out, this would create 10,000 jobs for Los Banas. And not every one of those people are going to live in the City of Los Banas, but they will be living close by, so not only will it help us, but it'll also help our surrounding communities. And it's just something that I think we need to continue working toward, and that will help our entire city grow. We can't keep doing the same thing and expect change.
Tom, thank you. I agree with Scott that we need, we need jobs, and we are working on the industrial park. I'm sure you're going to hear about that a lot tonight. And what that does, not only does employ citizens, enable them to work closer to home, it also increases the revenue, sales tax and property tax, revenue to the city and to the counties through the various commercial activities that go on there. Keep people closer to home, so that they can enjoy their families more. We also need some amenities. Our public pool, our old public pool is in bad shape, and we're presently trying to recover economically, so that we can get that done. We're trying to encourage people with entertainment, such as bowling alleys and miniature golf, to come to town. We still have, we still have people talking about that. We're still talking about that and encouraging that. Creating more, better jobs closer to home increases the revenue stream going into the city, and then we have a better opportunity to create more amenities like water park, swimming pool, and that sort of, those sort of activities for our citizens.
Ray?
Along with what you've already heard, which I agree with, again, jobs, they've talked about them. When we talk about jobs, you've got to understand that when, to me, when the people are prospering, the city will prosper. And so that's very important, to pursue the jobs. Recruiting, I mean, you mentioned the industrial business park over on I-5 and 165 that's being proposed. We need to continue to press into that and make it a priority, because that will help us in the job market. We need to also establish better relationships, not only with the county, state, and federal level. To make that happen, we need to make the process for the businesses user-friendly. So when they come in, it's going to be very attractive for them to want to do business here with us. That's also going to bring the jobs in. And for the jobs that are already here, we need to really work on retaining and supporting existing businesses.
Refugio?
Thank you. What are we lacking here? We're lacking a lot of things. Some things I call the quality of life issues. You mentioned swimming pool. Those are such items where individuals can take their families. A lot of our folks don't have the ability to go out of town, fill up their vehicle with fuel. They don't have a dependable vehicle, so we need to address those items as well. What we need the most of is change. We need to be proactive and go out and solicit these jobs, instead of just talking about it. A lot of our current leadership, well, some of us were really surprised about Patterson's ability to get that distribution center. That's unacceptable. Why didn't we get it? What do we do, what can we do differently? Well, we can go out there, again, talk to Patterson, re-initiate those ties with our neighboring communities, so that we do not, are not reactive to change, but we are proactive, and we can plan for those jobs now. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, the first person to answer will be Tom. Are you for or against redistricting the city?
Microphone.
Thanks.
I am absolutely in support of the district, voting by district of the city. I've supported that concept. I mentioned it 20 years ago. Fact is, City Council for many years, the majority of the council lived within a few blocks of each other. And I think that the closer you are to the people, the better you can represent them. There are 37,000 people in Los Banas. If there are four of us, each of us representing 9,000, it's a lot easier for me to bring the concerns of 9,000 people to council than it is 37,000 people to council. Gets me closer to the people, gets the people closer to me. And I have supported it for many years, thought about it, pondered it for many years. And I am looking forward to pushing forward with that, with that, and hoping that it will, the voters will vote in favor of it this fall.
Ray?
Yeah, what they're referring to is Measure S here. And Measure S has to do with rejoining, creating districts, basically dividing the city up into four big districts. And to me, that is very beneficial. Number one, why? Because it is the law for us to do that, and so we need to abide by the law. Second, it's the right thing to do. Again, it provides better representation for all of the people of Spanish. And this has been supported not only by the gentleman on my left here, but other people in Merced Sunstar, and it's the thing that we need to do.
Refugio?
Before we ask that question, we need to understand that there's a third option, the third option that has not been available to, or made available to the public, and that is cumulative voting. Cumulative voting will be enacted in the City of Santa Rita, California, Santa Clarita, California. It's been done since the mid-'80s in Peoria, Illinois. It's always been done in New York. What is cumulative voting? That is, that a voter has the ability to vote more than once for a candidate. So if there are two seats available, he can vote twice for that candidate. So there are options. And my biggest question is, why weren't the voters of Los Banos been more aware of this, so that we can make an informed decision? Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I too, I'm in favor of Measure S. And I was, you know, while we were on council, we went through the initial process of this. We selected maps. I've went on record as saying that I am in support of it. And, you know, it is the right thing to do, and taking into consideration that it is the law. And so I'm in favor, and I hope too, that the voters of Los Banas support this, because at this point, you have a say. You have a say in it, and you have a say in the map that the council approved. You get a say in it, and if we don't, we can have, we're going to enact it anyways, and we're going to have a judge maybe pushing a map on us, instead of a map that our constituents voted for. So yes, I'm in favor of Measure S. I will be voting for Measure S. Thank you.
The next question will be answered first by Ray. What will you do to improve revenue for the city?
Improving revenue for the city is very important. Bill's got to be paid. One of the things is to review all the existing programs that are in place right now that do generate revenue, to see if they can be improved in a fair way, to even be able to generate even more revenue. Creating, again, jobs, you know, we've talked about that. That's going to maintain revenue, and not only that, but keep the money here. And so that's going to generate revenue. Researching grants and monies that are available to help our fund, our general fund, you know, will help us in that area also, to support that.
Refugio?
Well, first of all, again, we have to change the way we think. We have to be proactive. We have to go out there and solicit and tell the businesses about the benefits of moving to Los Banos. We have 101, Highway 5 and Highway 99 bisected by 152. These are corridors that allow commerce to be moved freely and openly, and that's one of the things that businesses look forward to. So again, we need to be proactive and partner with businesses, so that they share the cost of building, and they're invested in the Los Banos city. Thank you.
Scott?
So this is something that I've, I've mentioned before, that I was on a committee, and there was a gentleman that sat on the committee with us, and he said that if you truly want to improve the fiscal health of the city, it's through economic development. Well, I can tell you, for the past, well, three of the four years I was on council, the City of Los Banas didn't have a lot of money to put into economic development. And I'm proud to say that in this last year, that we designated a half a million dollars of your money, and I think it's money well worth to invest in economic development. Because we can sit and talk about all the things that we want to do with economic development, but in the real world, you have to, you have to invest in it. You have to have some skin in the game. You have to have a group that goes to the... You have to have a group that goes to these trade shows because it's about finding a diamond in the rough. It's tough enough to do business in California, so we need to figure out ways not to be fighting the whole country. Look for those businesses that are going to survive and thrive in our valley and focus on those businesses. So, economic development is, to me, the answer to...
Well, your, our general fund revenue comes from property tax and sales tax. Sales tax, the more commerce you have, more sales tax you make. Property tax, the more valuable your property, the higher your property tax. Now, the way you make property more valuable is you make the town a better place to live. We're down, we've started on downtown beautification right now, elevating the downtown, and that's going to work its way out onto Pacheco. So, that the entire town looks like the place people want to come and do business. You know, Carmel doesn't have a problem with economic development because everybody wants to live there. So, my goal is to make Los Banos the Carmel, the Saratoga of the valley, where everybody wants to live. If everybody wants to live here, they're going to want to move here, they want to do business here. That raises the demand for our property, raises the amount of sales tax and property tax coming into the city, and we won't be short of revenues. We will have plenty to do all the things we need to do for our citizens that we really want to get done.
The next question, Refugio will be the first to answer. How would you bring jobs to Los Banos?
I think that's a common theme here. Again, we need to partner with business. We need to talk to our neighboring municipalities, find out how they did it, learn from their mistakes, capitalize on their accomplishments. We need to create an environment where they are willing to come, i.e. identifying taxes. You know, New York is running a big ad about deferring taxes for 10 years and doing other things which will attract business. We have to identify, again, the benefits of moving to Los Banos, the lower cost of construction, lower cost of labor, lower cost of land. These things are selling points. They may not be the selling point, but we have to understand that we have to be prepared when we talk to business.
Scott?
Well, I'd, I'd like to sit up here and tell you that I have the magic answer to bringing jobs to Los Banos, but I'm going to tell you, it's tough. It's tough when we're competing, and I'm going to keep beating on this drum. It's tough to do business in this state. It doesn't, it doesn't deter me. We have a team of folks here at City Hall, in our Economic Development Department, that are out there. They, I, I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're not trying. We've, we've made it be known that if any business wants to come here, they can get a man, a meeting with the city manager. Call any one of the council people to help them set that meeting up in order to help these folks, and if, and if they have a plan to come here, we do everything we can. When we get back to investing in these economic development dollars, this is where we can get ourselves out there so that we can talk, go to these trade shows, to talk to these folks, find that diamond in the rough, and bring them to Los Banos. I feel like we are trying to do that to the best of our ability, but to sit up here and just have a magic answer on how we're going to bring jobs here, there is no magic answer, and that's the reality of the situation.
Tom?
Now, jobs, recruiting for jobs, I feel like you have three fishing pools in the water. You have the little one for all the mom-and-pop stores that employ one or two people. You have the medium-sized pool in the river where you catch a striper or two a day. And now, over here, you've got the bluegill coming in. Here, you've got the striper, and you keep the big one in the water waiting for the sturgeon. The sturgeon, I only show up every few weeks. But you've got it all going at once, and jobs come to town by making the town a better place to live. You have to be careful. Just because they're jobs doesn't mean they're good jobs. And make sure that the economy is sustainable, that those jobs are sustainable. When the people brought the park, the industrial park, the commercial distribution center to Patterson, they talked to us. Some people talked to us about a distribution center. I don't know if it was the same people, the same center, but they came and spoke with us. But they, they wanted to build houses as well, and we didn't think we could handle the extra housing load. And so, that kind of made us shy away from, from that particular situation.
Ray?
I think we need to, you know, like they said, it's not a magic thing to do, and it's not something easy, but I, I feel that we need to start with identifying the things that are making our city not attractive for big business to come here. And, and we need to not only identify them, but we need to fix them, and we need to implement them, create them, develop them, make the changes that we need to make. The bypass, I believe, would be something that would help us in that area. There's other things that would help make us very attractive, and we need to, again, research that, identify them, and make the changes that we need to make to, to make us attractive so that we don't have to work so hard at trying to convince businesses to come, that they will come on their own. That, you know, they're going to see that we're a city that's on the move, that's moving forward. It's going to be a great city for their businesses to, to be in, so...
With the next question, will, the first person to answer will be Scott. Concerning the homeless, why are we not funding the continuum of care program with the county?
So, continuum of care, and I've openly admitted this to a lot of folks, this is the one vote that I regret while being on council. And I'm mad enough to admit that I regret making that vote. My intent, my reason, because in the grand scheme of things, the $12,000 compared to our 30-plus million dollar a year budget for the entire city, it's not, it's a lot of money to me individually, but when you look at the big picture, it's not that, it's not that much compared to the, the grand scheme of things. I regret making the vote because, and I made, my reason for making the vote was that I wanted, I said, if it's a regional program, I felt like all the cities in the region should participate. You can't tell me that they don't have homeless problems in any other cities. It's because we do offer services in Los Banos, that some of the smaller communities around us, when they have a homeless person, they end up coming to Los Banos. So, I now would support continuum of care. Again, it's the one vote that I regret in my four years of being on council, and, and I'm mad enough to stand up here and admit that to you.
Tom?
I voted against sending the money to continuum of care. It was $12,000, and I voted, I, I recommended we spend some or all of that instead on direct help to the homeless. We found the big problem for homeless families was that they needed temporary housing, and we found that they could rent temporary housing, $500, $600 a month. And when they told me how many families, it was easy within that $12,000 to provide rent money for people to find temporary housing until they got on their feet. The other aspects of it's, I think, once again, same reason I'm in favor of the districting. The closer you are to your citizens, the better job you can do. So too, money, the closer the money stays to the citizens, the better job the money does. And I'm totally in favor of helping the homeless. I've supported homeless projects many times, totally in favor of the rescue mission. It was a local project funded locally, led by Pastor Hammond. It was a wonderful program. And those kinds of programs are very effective, and I hope to see more of them, but I do not believe sending the money to the county for more administrative expense was going to be helping those homeless people that needed the money.
Ray?
The homeless, a very passionate issue on my heart. You know, the question has to be asked, you know, that we have an animal shelter here in Los Banos, and, and I asked the question, where's the shelter for the homeless? And it's something that we can't ignore. We need to embrace it. There was an organization called the MCAG that was made up of the, all the mayors of the city and the counties here. And even with the supervisor's support, they all agreed to come together and help the homeless and, and pursue the funds and the grants that are available through the state and the federal agencies to help us provide a sanctuary for the homeless. And I'm all for that. We need to continue pursuing it. We need to all come together and partner together and come together as one. Well, to me, we're all brothers and sisters. There are loss and hurting out there that we need to embrace.
Refugio?
Thank you. One thing we need to do is we need to partner with civic organizations. As you know, in the '50s and '60s, the civic organizations had millions and millions of, of participants and members. Has declined drastically over the last 30, 40 years. We need to partner with them because there's a lot of things that they can do that government cannot because government is constricted by laws which do not allow for flexibility or innovation. Civic organizations do not have that limitation. We need to start helping, excuse me, partnering with them in order to provide more care, more ideas. And yes, I will be in, in favor of supporting that, that fund.
For the next question, the first person to answer will be Tom. How do you feel about the RTIF, the Regional Transportation Impact Fee, not being collected?
Well, I wrote this down. My original reason for the opposition to the RTIF was its confiscatory effect on development of new business, essentially jobs. Based on that reasoning, I brought a couple of different recommendations to council for the collection of the fee, thinking it would help move the bypass project along and give us the necessary influence over its design and construction. One was a graduated payment over four years with forgiveness of the fee if the business did not survive. The other was a sales tax, which was actually supported by the citizens of Los Banos on a ballot years ago, but was not supported by the rest of the county. The result was the RTIF. As years have passed, I've taken a different position. My position has not changed, but my approach to the position is that it, is now driven by the founding principle of no taxation without representation. MCAG is an 11-member board, of which we only have one representative on that board from Los Banos. And to send money to MCAG with only one member on a board of 11 doesn't get, doesn't justify taxing our citizens and sending it to that board. It doesn't give us enough sway and enough power in the vote to direct the money for our benefit.
Ray?
I believe that any, any fee or program that's going to, you know, that we can co, that we can co-partner with, and it makes sense to move the city ahead to the next level, I think we need to consider it. I think we need to support it. Yeah, it might cost us money upfront. Sometimes we might, we might not think that it's justified, but again, if it makes sense and it's going to, we need to sacrifice those funds from our general fund and make those resources available to us. I think we really need to consider them.
Refugio?
As a general rule, I'm opposed to taxes. Taxes stifle businesses. They do not allow them to increase their product line. They do not allow them to operate efficiently because these taxes, again, affect their bottom line. They can't give their employees raises, et cetera. However, I also believe that we cannot operate as an island. If this RTF fund helps us improve infrastructure, roads, et cetera, that will also help us move commerce, attract businesses, et cetera. We need to readdress that and ensure that it is the right move. I don't have all the details, but again, generally, I do not agree with additional taxes. However, taxes are necessary in order to address infrastructure.
Scott?
So, the Regional Traffic Impact Fee, and if you follow my votes over the past four years, there was two years where I sort of supported a suspension of it to encourage business to come to town. We had absolutely nothing going on at the time, no new businesses coming in, and I felt like if we weren't getting anything, it wasn't going to hurt us to try and suspend the business fees and try to bring in some new businesses. And as time moved forward, I found myself realizing that before we have a discussion on whether we want a Regional Traffic Impact Fee, we really need to have the discussion in this town if we want a bypass or not. Because if we want a bypass, the only way that I see with the current system that has dealt to us, and I probably need more than a minute to talk about it, but the current system and the way that the state of California funds road projects, it's California State Highway 152, I don't think that it's our responsibility, but if we're going to get something done, the only way that I can see is to be participating in a regional fee. If we don't want a bypass, if the constituents of Los Banos don't want a bypass, then we just need to do away with Regional Traffic Impact Fees, period.
The next question will begin with Ray for answers. My concern is downtown. What would you do to help make downtown rentals more affordable so we can rebuild what should be the heart of the city?
In the history of, we're speaking real estate here, and attractiveness, and in most cities, the downtown area is always the most attractive, which makes it the most valuable piece of real estate. So, if you're looking to invest, you usually will want to invest in downtown. To make it more affordable, there could be incentives, programs that we can look into, that we can develop, that would enable everybody, not just the people who could afford it, but even the people that, that might not be able to afford it, provide programs to give them the opportunity to also partake in investing in the downtown area.
Refugio?
Well, first, I think we need to look at why downtown is mainly occupied by office retailers or occupants. I think we've concentrated too much time with some of the big-box retailers. These big-box retailers make it very hard for small mom-and-pop organizations, artisans, to compete with them. They, they send their retailers, or I'm not sure what the term is, into their shops. They identify why the items are priced at, what they have for sale and how many of it. They go back to their parent organization, and next thing you know, they have the same product or something similar offered at a much lower price. These things we need to identify, understand it. Unless we identify the cause of the problem, we're not going to be able to address the problem.
Scott?
Well, you know, I think as a city, it's our job to make sure that our streets are clean and that our sidewalks are clean and that our downtown is presentable, the stuff that the city is responsible for. I personally don't think that it's government's job to make, make rents more affordable or not affordable. I think that that's up to the individual businessperson. They have the business plan, and there's plenty of programs out there that they can, they can apply for, and we would be, at least I see our city being more than willing to help those folks with that. But I, I just don't see that it's our, the city government's job to do rent control in the downtown. Ultimately, it's up to the businessperson. I just don't, I don't think that it's right for government to go tell a landowner that they're going to have to lower their rents or that the city should be in the business of subsidizing rents.
I don't know this, I don't believe the city has the authority or should have the authority to tell landowners what to charge for rent. The market needs to do that, and it's our job as the city to make sure the downtown looks as beautiful as, as we can make it. The more beautiful it is, the more people will shop there. The more desirable it is to shop there, the more money they will make and the more financially feasible it will be for them to, for the businesspeople to open businesses downtown. And we have done that. We have undertaken a downtown beautification program. We rebuilt the, remade the signs at the entrance to downtown, lighting and flowers. We have flowers downtown, and we've got new banners and decorations. We have another big banner coming in, and we've also, we have a new bakery in town, and a couple of bakeries downtown. We have a new deli downtown. You can walk downtown and stroll downtown and shop, and it's becoming more stroll-friendly. It's becoming more user-friendly, more shopper-friendly, and people are, people are going there, and that's going to make it easier for the businesses to afford to pay those rents because they're going to have more business and more income to do it with.
The first person to answer the next question will be Refugio. What will you do to assure Los Banos gets water?
What can I do, right? What I can do is study the issue, understand what's worked, what hasn't worked. We need to partner again with our neighboring facilities, and that way, we can speak with a stronger voice to the state and other officials. Speaking, just as the city of Los Banos, we're not going to get very much attention. But if we partner and, again, reestablish those positive relationships with other communities, we can begin to rebuild some of these dams, repair some of these dams that are operating lower than maximum capacity because they've been neglected. Some of these, the issues that they've passed to try to repair the dams, they're, they're more concerned with environmental issues than they are with repairing the dams. For example, if you, oh, I can't answer. Thank you.
Scott?
Well, the first thing I would say is pray. Every Sunday when I go to church, I don't say that I make it every Sunday, but every Sunday that I'm there, I pray for rain because I live it every day. I, I, my day job is I'm a dairyman. I farm a little bit, so the first answer is to pray for rain. Because I've been talking to Mother Nature for the last year, and she really hasn't been super cooperative with me, but maybe as a group, if we can do that, maybe she'll listen a little bit more. But in all seriousness, what we need to do is support our local farming, our, our local water companies, our local, the, the exchange contractors. When they come to the city and they ask us to support one of their resolutions, asking our federal government to work together, our US Senate and our US Congress, to, House of Representatives, to work... of Representatives, to work together to come up with legislation that allows the people that know how to work the water system to work the water system. There's too much bureaucracy. By the time it rains and they call enough people to find, figure out a way to turn on a pump, that natural rainwater has already went out underneath the Golden Gate Bridge.
Tom.
Well, we've done a pretty good job in Los Banos. We are very, have been proactive on conservation for many years. We're way out ahead of the rest, way out ahead of the rest of the state. The, we did have, we did support a resolution, we voted on a resolution to help, to tell the state legislature, to recommend to them to rebuild and improve the water infrastructure, the surface water infrastructure particularly. We get our water from wells, and our wells are in pretty good shape thanks to our excellent management and our citizens' very good conservation. We are praying, we're all praying very much for rain because the water tables are dropping, and although we're going to be okay if we get some rain this year, next year's going to be pretty scary if we don't. So, we do a good job of managing it. Our public works as a top-notch crack organization. They're a top organization and they do a great job, and we are on top of that water situation, and if we don't get rain this winter, then we're going to have to take some more drastic steps. But right now, we're doing pretty well.
Ray.
Water, very important. Can't live without it. I agree with what's been said here, and the most important thing that we can do is pray for it. We need to, I believe, identify what has gotten us in the position that we're in. Here in the Central Valley, water is very critical for us, and we need to plan ahead better so that we don't find ourselves in the position that we're in right now, you know, trying to catch up and find ways to keep the water flowing. We need to stay ahead of the game. We cannot afford, you know, to put ourselves in this position again.
The next question will begin with Scott. In your opinion, how do we address the gang and crime problem in our community?
Well, I think one of the ways is probably the way that most people would agree with this, is to put more bodies on the street, put more officers on the street. And the reality is, is, you know, we are a healthy city, we're not a wealthy city. I, as a councilman, made promises to you folks that before we're going to increase staffing, that we are going to get those bodies that are in Measure A, which was the, you know, the original Measure P, Measure A, and then became Measure K, that those folks that were, that came from the general fund are going to get back to the general fund, and we're actively working on doing that. We're even looking at it in our mid-year budgets, that if we can only do, move a half of a body back, we move a half of a body back. And as soon as we get those bodies back, then we can address the issue of increasing our police force, and not only our police force, but our fire department as well. So, public safety is important to me, and I think that we address those issues by putting a few more bodies on the street, strengthening our gang task force, and partnering with our other local communities.
Tom.
Gangs and crime, you have prevention and you have reaction. You need to work on both ends at the same time. We took a huge cut in our police force back in 2009. I voted against it, a 25% cut, all our public safety, from which we are now still recovering. We just hired two police officers that were homegrown, just got them out of our, just came out of academy, graduated, and are going to be working for us now. We are slowly recovering. We're not, we are still not financially recovered so that we can't bring them all on, all the police that we need and want. Once we get those police numbers back up, then a big part of prevention is to get more of them on the ground, neighborhoods, walking neighborhoods. Friendly police officer, where the bus drops off the children, gangs can't recruit. And I have a good deal of experience with gang experience because I came from Stockton, I went to school in Stockton, and when I left Stockton, there were 273 street gangs. And so, we had quite a bit of experience with dealing with them and also in preventing them and preventing them from recruiting the children. And then also, you have to have, take a hard line on the criminal activity that they promote.
Ray.
When we speak about gangs, it's, to me, it's something that we need to take very seriously. We need to, you know, we can work it directly or indirectly. You've heard what's been said here about, you know, more police officers, that helps. That's very expensive. There's going to be other ways. We can indirectly do it also by implementing, creating programs to start working with the young ones, even at age five, when they get them in school. And intervention-type programs and educational programs that as these kids grow up, they're going to be trained up, equipped, to be able to say no to the gangs when they start trying to recruit them at that gang age as young teens. And so, we need to look at other ways and be very aggressive in these ways, and like I say, start working with the youth when they're very young.
Refugio.
As you may well know, it costs upwards of $10,000 to train, field, and get an officer ready for the streets. Currently, we have the police department in charge of code enforcement. These officers, many officers go out there and write tickets to businesses. The business merchants are now less likely to call the police because they see them as the guy that gave me the ticket. We're creating a rift within our community. We're creating a vacuum which the drug cartels are going to take advantage of. They also understand the corridors here, and it's a major drop-off point for drugs. We need to reestablish ties with our community, remove the police department from the code enforcement, staff those with other members. It does not cost the city as much. Again, it's a poor use of resources. They need, that sergeant who's in charge has a lot of information, a lot of training about drugs, their MOs, he needs to be out in the field teaching that information to the new recruits. Thank you.
For the next question, Tom will begin. Will you allow overbuilding in the city of Los Banos?
Well, overbuilding is a very general term, and we have to, we have to keep control, I don't know, I'm assuming this is of housing, I'm just taking that, and we try to avoid building more houses than we have services. We can't use schools, we can't use schools as a reason in a city hall because SB 50 prevents us from doing that. But, infrastructure, public service, roads, those things, if they justify preventing the excessive building of houses, then we can use those. But if they don't, then we have to move along and obey the law, and if a developer meets all the criteria and the city's infrastructure on the books and on paper says, yes, we have sufficient infrastructure, we have to let them build. And that is a big challenge for us, and is going to continue to be a big challenge for us as we move forward, as the Bay Area pressures us and as their supply of homes diminishes and we have to pick up the slack.
Ray.
Along with what was just said, excessiveness in anything, I don't believe is good. I believe that our focus needs to be balanced, determining the needs of our community as we continue to grow and develop, needs to address, you know, the pace that we maintain as far as relative to building.
Refugio.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Oh, sure. And I can do this anytime, by the way. Will you, will you allow overbuilding in the city of Los Banos?
Well, absolutely not. Overbuilding, that creates a, what you want to do is you want to have an equilibrium, a balance of jobs, buildings, et cetera. We have to have targeted building. We have to attract those buildings which are beneficial to our city, services or products that are lacking so that you don't have over-competition, which doesn't really help. You do need competition, you need the free market. However, overbuilding only creates pockets of unbuilt lots, creates blight, and it just, it does not attract other builders.
Scott.
So, the quick answer to the question is no, I don't think any of us wants excessive building or overbuilding in Los Banos. I will tell you that there are a lot of lots that are paper lots in the city of Los Banos that are ready to go, that if a developer wanted to come and pull the permits tomorrow, that they could start building on those. And my question, well, my answer to this would be is, is we have to take a smart approach to it. I don't want to call it controlled growth because I don't necessarily know that that's always the best answer, but I think that moving forward, let's not forget where we came from and what we went through in the past and the position that it put us in now. I think that if we take a common sense approach to allow building, we definitely have a lot of infill that we need to do, finish out some of these neighborhoods that were started and not finished, and if, and let this, truly let the market dictate, supply and demand, and as a city, take a common sense approach to what we're going to allow. But I will tell you, it's going to be a long time before we're going to need to approve any more housing projects in the city of Los Banos because we have a lot of infill that needs to happen.
For the next question, Ray will be the first one to answer. What are your qualifications for city council and what is your background?
Okay, first of all, my background, I can say that I've been a public servant for about 40 years. 24, 28 and a half of those years was in the capacity of a fire captain, which I was responsible for not only a crew, a station, and millions of dollars worth of equipment where we had to make decisions, life and death decisions in a matter of seconds, but I've also worked a little over 12 years working with the youth, troubled youth, and just helping them get their life into alignment, giving them hope for the future, helping them understand their I consider myself a man of integrity. I love integrity, honesty, the truth, you can't beat it. We need to all learn to just continually discipline ourselves to operate in that.
Refugio.
Well, first of all, there's nothing special about me. I'm just a regular guy, lives over in College Greens. I do have a small business background. I understand the need to have a plan, short-term, long-term. You've got to have a vision to where you want to be, and you have to be able to get people to do things they otherwise wouldn't normally want to do, and how do you do that? You do that by providing them with all the information available, provide them with choices. As a Marine, and as I've risen through the ranks, I understand budgets a lot more clearly. As you know, the military's going through sequestration, so that's meant that we have to do a lot more with a lot less, and that easily transfers over to government. And again, that's an approach I would take. Thank you.
So, my background, I've mentioned before, I'm a dairymen by trade. That's what I go to work and do every day. And so, what I think that sets me apart from other members of the council is I know what it means to sign the front of a paycheck. I know what it means to answer to a bottom line. I know what it means to not spend more than you bring in. So I think that qualifies me because when I make decisions as a council member, I make those decisions and I take, I make, I act like that's my check. I'm personally writing that check, and that is the test to me whether it's a good idea or not. If that was my personal business, would I write a check to do that? So I think that uniquely qualifies me, and I do have a background in, I've been a volunteer fireman since 1996. I sit on the spring fair board. I am, I'm a family person. I have a wife and two beautiful kids. I think all those things, I don't think it's one thing, I think it's all those things together that uniquely qualify me to be a council member and to represent you.
I believe my job as a council member is to represent my citizens, and I've lived my entire life in the public eye from my childhood when my parents managed the Portuguese Hall in Tracy and church. There, we're all very heavily involved in public service. And in Los Banos, I teach music, which is a very public activity. My performances are done in the public. I live in Los Banos, I've always lived in the town where I've worked, and so I have to answer to the public on a daily basis, and that's the most important thing, in my opinion, for a council member. You have to be able to go out and face your citizens. Every time you make a decision, look them in the eye and say this. Number one is, what do you want from council? What can I take from you? What can I bring to council that you need, that you want to see? And then, when I go back out into the community, I'm able to look at them and say, this is what I did and the best I could do, what we could do, what we couldn't do. And I think that that responsiveness is what unique, in my experience with the public, is what qualifies me best for the position.
The next question will ask Refugio to answer first. What are you going to do to bring more things for teenagers to do?
Well, those are, those quality of life issues. I don't understand, again, I wasn't privy to the decisions or the financial decisions that led to the closing of the swimming pool over Pacheco Park. Those are some of the things we need to do. Another thing that's a pretty quick fix, I think, is making the community center truly a community center. At current time, it closes at 5:00 PM. That is not a community center. It needs to be open longer. We need, again, to partner with civil organizations who have agreed, I've spoken with them, to man that, if you will, provide for cleanup, provide for some security so that we don't, it doesn't come out of our operating budget. We need to, well, make a team center. Now, some of these sheds, and again, I don't know the feasibility of it, some of those sheds that were torn down because of the homeless problem could easily have been turned to a youth center, some weights, some, a lot of big screen TVs, et cetera. Thank you.
Scott.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that I would love to do, and one thing we can do is encourage these businesses that, you know, there's been talk, that there's a family entertainment company that wants to come into the Loews business. We can encourage those as a city to help them with that process and to streamline stuff that they can open, but what we have to remember is it takes money to do all this stuff, and I just want to remind everybody that we've just come off of the worst economic recession that I've ever seen in my lifetime. And I'm only 36 years old, so I know that it's not been long, but I talked to my parents and they've never seen it that bad. And so, we're kind of coming out of this deal, and I think that these are all things that we can do moving forward, and we've had the discussions about a swimming pool. It costs a lot of money, a lot of money, and we just don't have that money to do it right now. And as those funds became available, then maybe we can look into that, but it takes money to do all this stuff, and quite honestly, we're just now in a position where we're just seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. We didn't have the money for the last four years.
Tom.
Yeah, the teen activities, the more economic stuff you have going, the more money there is flowing in the community, the more chance you have of a business that serves them, like bowling alleys and miniature golf and that sort of thing, come for the children, for the youth. The pool is shut down because the school district owns it. The pool is shut down because it's no longer safe to run, it doesn't operate anymore. It's very old and dilapidated, needs replacement, and as soon as we can find the money to partner with the school district to rebuild that pool and make it usable for the children, along with a little water jet park for children, I think we need to be able to do that, but as I said, as Scott said, we're recovering from a very terrible recession. Once again, I like to see activities in communities. We have the College Greens building, and then Ranchwood has a little building, those kind of buildings, one of those little buildings, and if we have some more money, we start getting our economic engine going, we get some more money, work with buildings and neighborhoods to run after-school programs for the children, for the youth, for the teens, I think those are all good things.
Ray.
Bringing programs for the youth, to me, is very, again, very valuable, very critical. They are our next generation. We need to, I mean, we cannot sit back and say, you know, we don't have the money, we don't, you know, we can't generate it, because there's always ways to generate money. There's ways to, you know, we don't have, let's say we don't have the funds, you know, there's plenty of pools that could have been utilized in our community at the high schools that could have been made available. We need to pursue those things. We need to, you know, put value into our youth, keep them, not just busy and occupied, just keep busy and occupied, but to provide programs that are going to, again, equip them, train them up, you know, let them have fun. You know, I remember when I was a youth, they had a dance club that we could go to once a week, and it was, to me, that's one thing I talk about today, you know, even at my age, that it was something that kept me out the streets. So we need to pursue those type of programs.
For the next question, Scott will be the first to answer. With so much of Los Banos' population working in other cities, how important is regional transportation to the city?
So, I'll reiterate off of my point earlier. When we talk about the industrial park and doing stuff out there, maybe some of those folks can not have to go over the hill to get those livable, meaningful wage jobs. They can come and work here. And back to the RTIF and what does it mean, the reality of the situation is, is our valley doesn't have the votes in the state of California, in the California Senate, in the Assembly. We don't have the votes to get them to pay attention to us. You go down to Southern California and there's sections within LA County You go down to Southern California and there's sections within LA County that there might be five, six, seven, eight Assembly members representing that one county. When you look at our Assembly member, they, he represents Merced County, part of Stanislaus County, and Madera County. Our state senator represents parts of four counties. So, being a part of the regional traffic impact fee, the bypass, it's all tied together.
Tom.
Could you repeat the question, please, John?
With so much of Los Banos' population working in other cities, how important is regional transportation to the city?
If I had my druthers, we'd have a system like the ACE system out of Tracy going into the Bay Area. I'm a big fan of public transportation. The fact is, public transportation has to be, has to be supported by a government and private business cooperation. It does not make a profit, it never does. And so if it's, if you're trying to base it on a profit-making business, it's never going to happen. It's something that governments do and do well in cases of BART and subways. And in Merced County, we have the bus between us and Merced. It doesn't run nearly enough. I would love to see a lot more. Because there's no rail across Pacheco Pass, we can't have an ACE system like that, so we need some kind of a nice bus system. The modern buses are very efficient and are very good means of travel. And if we could, if we could generate the funds to have that kind of a system to commute, for commuters particularly, I would wholeheartedly support it.
Ray.
I think, you know, we have a need there. Right now, we don't, you know, we don't have the means to have the existing jobs to keep our people here. So it's very important. And again, we need to identify it, we need to support a program that will meet that need until we can be in a position where a lot of our people don't need to travel and commute for the jobs, the jobs will be here. So, again, you know, we need to implement and develop a program that's going to enable to meet that need for our people right now.
Refugio.
Lady General Transportation, okay. That's a big program. Big program, which entails expenses, expenses such as wages, long-term benefits, retirement, et cetera. We need to be very careful with those types of expenses. As you know, the city of Stockton is still in a receivership because, one of the main reasons, is because of these expenses that they didn't plan accordingly. It can affect any city, no matter how vibrant or how healthy it is. Many of our commuters, as I was one, who commuted over to Milpitas for approximately nine years, they love the flexibility of having their vehicle. Very few would be willing, I believe, to leave their vehicle, because now they would need a source of transportation from the drop-off point to their final destination and back. That creates more time, more stress, more worry, more time. So, at this point, I don't see a great need to invest a lot of money or resources. Thank you.
The next question, the first person to answer will be Tom. It's two-part. Is the community center profitable? Should it be profitable?
A community center is not profitable. Last estimate I was getting was about costing, costing about eighty thousand dollars a year operation funds. Should it be profitable? No. It's a public service. And anyone who expects it to be profitable, I think, is wrong. Public service, public service systems like the community center are designed to serve the public, and therefore, the function isn't to make a profit, but to serve the public. And so the profit is measured in public service. The way the community center is designed, I voted against its construction and because of its cost and its present design, because I did not see it serving the needs I thought I wanted filled by a twelve-and-a-half million dollar structure. And so, it is not profitable, it probably never will be profitable. And so, it's our job as a city to make sure that it serves the citizens in the best way possible in the many facets of it, and take advantage of as much what it has to offer as possible.
Can I hear the question?
Sure. Is the community center profitable? Should it be profitable?
Again, when we're talking about the community center, look at the word "community," "come in unity." We need to, again, operate the community center in such a way that it's available to everybody, it's affordable to everybody. I don't think any community center is gonna, is really designed to function and to create this great profit. I think, again, it all goes back to what's important here. And to me, what's important is investing in the people. The people's what's important. In order to invest in the people, sometimes we need to subsidize our facilities to allow them to be used to the maximum of their potential. And that community center is a beautiful building, it was much needed in this community, and I'm so glad that we have it. And, you know, let's create programs and ways of funding to allow it to be accessible to everybody.
Refugio.
Well, a commuter center, it's large, it's expansive, and it was expensive to build, and it's expensive to maintain. Hybrid's here, and we can't just say that it will never turn a profit. We have to work towards making it as, bringing as many, much revenue as possible. Rent it out, one of the things we had, I think the Chamber of Commerce sponsored, was the Senior, Salute the Seniors Fair. Those things attract the community, to make it aware that it's there. And it helps, it helps offset, and I think Mr. Fire would agree with him there, and that's how you see some of the profit, is that the community appreciates it, uses it, and it expands on people's knowledge of our city, knowing that we have that type facility that can hold a large events. But I don't think that it ever will be profitable.
Scott.
And so if you're looking at the peer numbers, what it costs to operate the facility versus the income that it generates, no, it's not profitable. But, again, it's been said, is, how do you measure the profitability? What is your definition of profitability? What it does for our community, what it does for the folks, you know, I was at Salute the Seniors. Those folks were absolutely ecstatic to be there. You talk to Gloria Mendonza and her group and what they do there, they love it there. So, the quick answer is, is we need to support it. It's here, we're not going to unbuild it. Whether you agreed with it or didn't agree with it, that's a moot point, it's here. We need to support it. We need to support it, because if people are going to hold grudges and not go and not support it, well, guess what? Then we're all going to subsidize it even more. So, it's a beautiful building. All buildings eventually have a shelf life, so we might as well take full advantage of it and use it to the best of our ability. So, it's not profitable when you look at it strictly on a monetary level, but it's profitable to the community and ask those folks that use it and utilize it, and ask them if it's profitable. They love it there.
The next question will begin with Ray. What is the best part of living in Los Banos?
Los Banos, to me, is, it's a beautiful city. It's got so much to offer. What it offered me when I came was potential for greatness and the people, I love the people, the, it just, it had so much to offer and, you know, in growth, I'm talking in growth. And to me, it's, we can make it be, you know, help it get to its full potential, so that not only do we benefit, but the business benefits, the people here benefit, we grow together as one and make it be, you know, a model city, a city that operates in the spirit of excellence and shows, you know, the love and the care for the people.
Refugio.
I think one of the best parts of living in Los Banos is its small-town atmosphere, its quaint, unique feel, something that's been lost in a lot of cities and municipalities, something that I, quite honestly, ran away from in San Jose. San Jose, as you know or may not know, used to be a nice, quiet town. But with building and overdevelopment and just runaway growth, it just destroyed that atmosphere. And I think that's one of the best things here. Also, the ability to go down to the store, pick up what you need, and be back in your house, sometimes before the next commercial. It's just, it's just one of those things that you can't put a price tag on. And I think that, as you say, the congressman, what is one of my first priorities is to keep that small-town atmosphere, to keep that feel, that uniqueness, because once it's lost, it's lost.
Scott.
So as a lifelong resident of Los Banos, one of the things that I'm most proud of, and I talk to a lot of folks about, is how much our community gives. This is, and I would love to see it one day, and maybe, you know, some kid in their college for their, for their master's, there's something, or a senior project for a kid in high school, is to find out on an annual basis, what do the citizens of Los Banos contribute to the numerous charities that are in this town? And to me, that is, that shows the true heart of a community, is their willingness to give. And this town, it never ceases to amaze me. I've been involved in fundraiser after fundraiser for, you name the event, and they set a goal this year, and they exceed it the next year, and then they exceed it the year after that. So, that's one of the things that I'm most proud of about living in Los Banos, is the givingness of our community.
Just one is awfully hard to say. If it was just one, I wouldn't have stayed here for thirty years with our family. Los Banos is, in my opinion, call me nostalgic, I see Los Banos as a classic Americana, an American, a town of American dream, family, schools. Los Banos takes care of its people. If someone's in need, we, there's someone right there to take care of them. We have public activities, we have clubs, we have public services, we have lots of churches, I think we have forty churches now. The people who move to Los Banos, move to Los Banos because they want that flavor. And the kinds of people who want that flavor are exactly the kind of people that make it great. It's the people. And our unique geographic location allows us to live our life in our traditional way and still have the opportunity and the progressive mindset that we have to have a college in town and to build, to build schools and to pursue high-tech industries, like we have a light bulb, high-tech light bulb industry in town, all that here in a rural environment.
For the next question, the first answer will be given by Refugio. How important is the proposed bypass to Los Banos? And what can the city council do to expedite its construction?
I think it would be important for the movement of commerce. I understand that a lot of folks who operate businesses on Pacheco may not want it. However, I seem to believe that most traffic that goes on 152 does not stop, does not pay or do business with our merchants. I may be wrong on that, but I believe most folks are going through to get to their destination. A lot of these big trucks, they idle, stoplight after stoplight, that reduces their time to get their product to their destination. And as you know, a lot of companies, their selling point is that we can get our product to destination A by X time. And they compete very heavily on that. And I think that's one of the main reasons that we cannot attract a business here, is because we need to be able to move commerce quicker. And I think that we need to put that, again, as number one priority. Thank you.
Scott.
It's, to me, it's very important. When you look at traffic through Los Banos on a Friday night, and how long it takes, and I get it, we're not LA where you sit in traffic for four hours, but from what I'm used to, when it takes you twenty-five minutes to get from one side of town to the other side of town, it's a problem. And the way that you're going to fix that is with a bypass. And guess what, folks? Bypasses are not built overnight. They take time. If we pulled the trigger on it tomorrow and said, okay, we're going to do this tomorrow, we're still at least, in my estimation, five to ten years away, minimum, from having this deal done. So, we have, and if we wait for Caltrans to do it, it's going to be Friday night through Los Banos every day. And then what? And then we're all going to suffer for the next ten to fifteen years before we get a bypass built? I just, I would rather go down as the person that's trying to get something done than sitting back and waiting for Caltrans to, in their infinite glory, come up with a plan to get it done, and then, and we are the ones that suffer. So for me, I think it's very important, there's been process that's been laid out to...
Tom.
Can you repeat the question for me, so I can get the right wording?
How important is the proposed bypass to Los Banos? And what can the city council do to expedite its construction?
I think the bypass is less important to Los Banos than to everybody else trying to get around us. We frankly know how to get around town pretty well. And the thing is, is it has to be planned. Now, I have the bellwether experience of having grown up in Tracy. I can tell you all about bypasses. We had 205, which is an interstate that went around Tracy back when I was a teenager, and a few years later, then they had State Route 120. Let's not forget that 152 is State Route 152, and it's California's responsibility to make sure traffic moves on it smoothly, it's not ours. But, and we can't even do anything on that highway without Caltrans permission, so why we expect that we should be able to build a bypass on our own with thirty-seven thousand, one thousandths of the population of California is a little naive, and I think frankly, a little foolish. Do we need it? It'll come in time. It's nice, it would be nice to have it on Friday nights, on weekends, but it needs to be planned very, very carefully, and it needs to be mapped out carefully, and it needs to be transitioned carefully, so you don't end up with a situation like on Tracy with 11th Street, with the buildings they don't even know what to do with leftover from 54...
Ray.
The bypass, again, it's one of those issues that's very critical. I, there was a study done years ago, and that study indicated that the Chaco Boulevard would turn into a parking lot. We are seeing that today because of what hasn't been done years ago to prevent this from happening. We cannot waste any more time on this bypass. It is very critical. And what can the council do? The council can start working very hard, researching, not leaving any stones unturned, to make sure that we are doing everything that we can and, again, maintaining those relationships with the resources out there, federal, state resources that are available, to make sure that this project's going to happen. It's going to be a great project for the city of Los Banos, and it's also a safety issue to me. Having you struck him right through here, you know, the same road that we travel with our families, it's a safety issue. It needs to be taken care of.
For the next question, we'll begin with, answers with Scott. What is the first challenge you would like to address once in office?
I think we're knee-deep in a few things right now, we're kind of in holding patterns, and I want to continue to address is, I've talked about it earlier, but is this industrial park. I think that we're in the very preliminary stages, and we haven't hit any major roadblocks yet. But I think that's the key, is if we can get folks employed here with meaningful wage jobs, if you follow the chain down on how that works, if they live here and work here, they spend their money here, which increases our sales tax revenue, that people want to come, they want to live here, you have better communities, better neighborhoods, which increases your property values, which, you know, and let's face it, the city runs off of sales tax and property tax. And so we need to be looking at ways to increase those, so that we can continue to provide some of those quality-of-life services to our residents. So I think it's really important, and it's one of the things that I will continue to tackle, is some of the, I know it's a big-picture item, and it's still years away, but I think it's very important. We can't keep doing the same thing and...
Tom.
First challenge is to find out whether this business park will come to fruition. We're putting our hopes in it, and it has tremendous potential. And we're going to continue to put our energy and our hopes into it, and our minds and our focus, so that we will know whether it will work. Once we know, one way or another, then we can plan for the future development of the city and how we can continue to entice more jobs. That's not the only thing we want to do. We want to continue to keep crime down, fight the gangs. We have put, we have really put, put it to the gangs. They are having a much harder time in Los Banos than they used to, because we've made it a priority. I can see it around the town, and I can see it on campuses with the, with students. It's a much less pronounced presence than it once was. We have to keep Los Banos safe, we have to make Los Banos prosperous, and we have to continue to pursue so many things at once. And I guess you could say the first challenge is to go after everything.
Ray.
It's not, it's not an easy question to answer, but to me, one of the most important things, again, to me, is the people. And we need to really identify, you know, what we need to do as a city to be, you know, it's supposed to be a government, you know, of the people, by the people, for the people. And I totally believe that, I have a heart for that, and the voice and the heart of the people need to be heard. So that relationship needs to be developed, and along with the homeless issue, the bypass issue, all these things are so important. You know, the crime, the gangs, everything that you've been hearing about are so important to make this city be what it needs to be. And there's no real easy, I mean, easy, you know, issue that takes precedence. To me, they're all important. But again, it starts, to me, with the people. The people, it starts with the people. The people, it starts with the people and the relationship.
Sir, could you repeat the question?
Sure.
What is the first challenge you would like to address once in office?
I think the perception by many folks that they do not have a voice in the city council. Our city's becoming fractured, a lot of folks don't feel to have a voice, and that's one of the first things I wanna address. I wanna make sure that people understand that I, as an elected official, I am a public servant first. My mission is to implement the will of voters, even if it's contrary to what I believe, not to pursue private agenda. We can't continue to elect the same folks and expect the different results, to tap off what Mr. Severo said. So we need to change the way we do business. We have to change, we cannot continue to do business in a vacuum, referring to people that we know. I understand that we all associate with people of similar likes, interests, et cetera, but when you're in public office, you have to go out to the folks, you have to go out to every aspect of the community and understand their needs in order to ensure that you have a correct public policy. Thank you.
The next question, the first answer will be Tom. I have always found I can express my concerns to my council. In a recent council meeting, I heard this wasn't so. What would you propose to change, if anything, to open this?
I'm, I don't know what council meeting referring to. We have public forum and we have public hearings, and the mic is always open, and my, my door is always open, my phone is always open. My cellphone is 209-675-1675. Please call me anytime you would like, and I will always get back to you as soon as I can. If you call me at midnight, it might be a few hours, but I'll get back to you. Your concerns will get to the city of Los Banas, and I will make them known in no uncertain terms, if something is not being done correctly, as staff well knows, when I'm having a problem or a citizen is having a problem, it gets taken to staff immediately, and, and I, I usually don't like taking no for an answer if it's something we can fix. If we can't fix it, if it's a problem we can't fix, then we're going to go and, and we're gonna talk to you and see what, what we can do to work around that and with that. But I would always want everyone to feel they have a voice in this room and a voice with me.
What we're talking about here is communication. Very critical and the basis for awesome relationships. I totally agree with you. I've experienced the same frustration. Recently put in calls to the city leadership and have only gotten one response. And that's just, it's not the first time, but again, it's, I would, what I would do personally, I would be very transparent, I would, I would totally promise and enforce an open-door policy. Again, your heart and your voice, to me, is so important. That's what I want to represent, that's what I'd love to hear, and, and, you know, and again, it's just that relationship between our community and our leadership, and to me, you can't put a value on that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question? It seemed like it was lengthy. I have always found I can express my concerns to my council. In a recent council meeting, I heard this wasn't so. What would you propose to change, if anything, to open this up?
Well, we can talk about open-door policies all day long, but the fact of the matter is that we have to go out to the people, we have to go out there, interact, we have to go out there to go to these businesses that we don't normally frequent in our normal course, because now we're elected officials, we have a responsibility. Another thing is I'll let people know that I would always be guided by the fundamentals which make this country the greatest country in the world. The ideals that our founding fathers made when they put together the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence, those things, because our responsibility is to create a venue where people can prosper, can make decisions of individual responsibility and self-determination. People understand that you need to trust your elected officials, you need to have an understanding of where they make the decisions, how they come about their decisions, and what the decision-making process is, and that's what I would focus on, ensuring that they understand that my decision will be focused on the principles which make this country great, so they know exactly when I'm having to...
Yeah, I mean, it's, I feel like I've always had an open-door policy, and believe me, I've gotten phone calls from people that just wanted information, had questions or concerns about something. I've had people that called me that were maddened and horned at me because they didn't agree with the way I voted on something, and I've never shied away, and I don't feel I've ever sent off the, the vibe that I'm unapproachable. I'm, I'm around this town as much as anybody, I, I'm, so I don't know what more I can do. You can get ahold of me by email, by phone, you can call down here to City Hall, so I don't know what more that I can do to be more open and responsive, but at the same time, the folks that are out there have to, have to be willing to contact me. I, I can't be, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm one person, I can't see and, and go to every person, but if, if anybody takes the time to reach out to me, I feel that they feel that whatever the issue is, is important that, that they wanted to contact me. So I always give them the respect of getting back ahold of them.
The next question, the first person to answer will be Ray. The various city commissions currently seem to be stagnant. What are your plans to stimulate the various commissions?
Well, first of all, I mean, that tends to happen from time to time, but when it happens, it needs to be identified, first of all. We need to find out, you know, the purpose, again, you know, review the purpose of these commissions, why they're established. You know, are they needed, are they not needed? And, and the ones that don't seem to be producing any fruit, you know, we need to do something about that. We shouldn't allow them to exist and not be producing the fruit that they're supposed to be producing. So, again, identifying the needs, identifying what's working, what's not working, making the corrections where they need to be made, and, and again, just working towards being that city of excellence that we need to be.
Refugio?
Well, I believe one of the key points there is purpose. You have to identify the purpose and ensure that they're still meeting the, the purpose of their establishment. But I think most important is you, you have to have a change, because if these committees are stagnant, it's because there is a lack of leadership, there is a lack of direction, there is a lack of planning, and this all stems from, again, lack of oversight. So the process is talking to these folks, identifying what their mission is, and having oversight, inspecting the product from conception to delivery, ensuring that they understand that they will be held accountable and replaced if possible. There has to be a consequence for failure to act, to failure to produce.
Yes, I would say maybe the, the commissions sometimes are stagnant, and I don't think it's for lack of leadership, anything that, we don't get people to apply for them. And so when you don't have bodies to even fill the vacant positions, it's hard to threaten that you're going to send somebody away, but where I, what I try to do is, is if I, in my travels throughout our community, if I see someone that has an interest in arts or someone that, that shows an eye for economic development, I try to encourage those folks to come and apply for these positions. And, and I think as, as a council, anybody on the council, the mayor, I think staff does it, if they see somebody who is interested in, in one of the specific commissions, then we ask them to apply, but I mean, you can only ask them, we can't force anybody to do anything. And so, and then to the point of, with, I'm sorry.
Tom?
The various commissions, Planning Commission is as active as the industrial-commercial development world is. The more industrial-commercial development, housing development, whatever, development, zoning, et cetera, is going on, then the more, then the busier the Planning Commission is, the more stagnant the economy, the less busy the Planning Commission is. That's why we have a few, now we're seeing a little more, a little pickup there. Parks and Recreation, we have, that's a joint commission with us and the school district and I think the county, and they oversee the operation of the Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Rec does not have a large staff to oversee, it's just a matter of making sure all those programs run smoothly. Airport Commission, if we do that big project, that big industrial park, they're gonna have their hands full for sure. And then, of course, EDAC is also involved very heavily in the development, not only in the big stuff, but on the small stuff, downtown beautification, city beautification, and also the development, business development, economic development. So I don't think they're stagnant, they're just serving their functions as suits, as fits what's actually going on in the city.
Given time, we're down to our last two questions, again, random, and the first person to answer this will be Refugio. We all know the city's hands are tied in regards to getting the schools more money from development. How can you see helping in this critical issue?
Again, that speaks to partnership and having a good communication with the school board, talking to them, finding out what their, what plans they have, seeing how we can assist or augment their plans. In this area, I don't have a lot of experience. I can only say that we need to partner with folks, and I just wanna address the, the last question a little bit. I was talking more about the staff that's responsible for filling the positions, not the volunteers.
Scott?
Yeah, so the, we have what's called the two-by-three committee, and I think it's an important committee. It's, it's two council members, three school board members. I know that because of SB 50, that we, our hands are tied, we cannot force to charge for anything more than what is by law allowed for services. But at the same time, I, what I think is important with this two-by-three committee is letting each other know what's going on. You know, the, the city and, and the school district are two big groups within the city of Los Banas, they touch every one of our daily lives in one way or another. So I think that two-by-three committee is important because you can talk about the issues in an informal manner, it's, it's not a, ultimately, anything that comes out of there has to go back to the respective board or council for a vote, but just getting that, that your head around some of the issues that are coming for, for the school district, that are coming up for the city, I think that's our way that we work with those folks. So that way, nothing is a surprise to anybody. There's no games of hiding anything from anybody, each side should know what's going on.
I got into politics for just that reason, and the way, the city's hands are tied, the city government, but the citizens' hands are not tied. We gathered a group of citizens and came to a council meeting, and so many people spoke that the developers didn't wanna have to deal with the negative press, and they came forward and volunteered to pay higher fees. Now, remember that the population of Los Banas is a very high percentage of children as compared to the rest of the state. The average child percentage in California is 25%, but in Los Banas, 34% of the town are children. So they are a very large part of our town and our community, and the, the schools are really, they're the biggest employers, and the schools are the biggest thing in town. And so the citizens, so many of them are families and are affected by the schools in so many ways, when they continually staying, discontinue staying involved, then they put pressure on the development community to meet the needs that need to be done that the city, government, city council is unable to do. So we always ask for citizen input and...
Ray? Can you repeat the question?
Sure. We all know the city's hands are tied in regard to getting the schools more money from development. How can you see helping in this critical issue?
Again, it's important, as it's been mentioned, we have a large percentage of youth, very variable, very important. We do need the money to provide everything that we need to, to train them, equip them, and educate them. So to me, one of the things that we could do is to study what other cities, other entities are doing in meeting this need of developing money, see what's working, see what's not working, be innovative and make those programs even better than what's in existence in those cities and implement them, develop them, implement them.
This is the last question before our two-minute closing statements, and Scott will be the first to answer. Are there any plans to make our animal shelter a no-kill shelter or at least improve the shelter itself?
Well, I would tell you that I'm not aware of a plan at this point to make it a no-kill shelter. I know that recently at a council meeting, we had a lady come up and speak and brought us some ideas of what they're doing in Turlock with different programs, and I know that we're always researching these things, and we have an awesome group of folks that volunteer at our animal shelter that take up the brunt of the work out there, and I've been out there, I've taken a tour of it. It's, it's very disheartening to go out to the animal shelter, just for the main reason, if those animals don't find homes, you know what's gonna end up happening to them. So to answer the question, there is no current plan to make it that, but I would, if, if it was feasible, I would definitely be willing to entertain the idea of doing that.
From the city's point of view, if we had the money to keep all the animals alive, I would love to do that. My daughter used to work for a veterinarian, and she had to participate in putting them down, and it is a very painful thing to do. And the problem is, we cannot afford to keep them, we don't have the facilities and the, and the money to keep them, but if there are groups in town would like to form, and the city would be glad, I would be glad from the city point of view, to facilitate anything we could do if, to, to pursue a no-kill shelter. I, I, I have a very close affinity with animals, and I hate watching them die, I hate having to put them down, it's a heartbreaker, and anything I could do as a council member, I would be glad to do. And as soon as our town gets, is no longer just healthy but wealthy and we can afford to expand that shelter, make it better, bigger, and do a no-kill program, then I would support it wholeheartedly.
We're talking about life here. It doesn't matter to me if it's animals or human life, it's life. And to support a no-kill shelter, to me, would be a great thing. And we have the land, we have the people, I believe that we have the resources, if we can just get creative and innovative and do the research again and see how other entities are dealing with the same subject matter, again, what, what's working, what's not working, but, you know, we need to, we need to pursue those avenues and learn how to deal with a situation, and the last thing that we wanna do is, you know, to take a life of an animal. Again, we, to me, we have the land, we have the resources, we have the people, you know, let's work hard and so that we can support a no-kill shelter and be a model.
Refugio?
Well, I think one key term there is resources. We have limited resources. Yes, I do not agree with killing the animals, euthanizing them, however, sometimes that is the, the only answer because of limited resources. We have to outweigh the resources we have and ensure that we're first helping our community, our individuals, our senior citizens, et cetera. A no-kill facility would be expensive. How do we house them? How do we feed them? How do we provide the electricity, heating, the cooling, et cetera? There's a lot of things that go into effect when you talk about these things. I mean, it's a normal cause. Again, I saw one of my dogs I had for fifteen years, when euthanized him, you know, he looked at me as he closed his eyes for the last minute, and I, I don't, I don't want any animals killed, but unfortunately, we have to look at it as, as a resource issue, and I think people come first.
We're now to the end of the program, the conclusion, which are the two-minute closing statements from each candidate. Again, I have the four names in a basket, and I will pick one name out, and that person will start, and then we will go around again until the last person gives their concluding statement. And the person is Tom Faria.
Thank you. My name's Tom Faria, and I'm running for a third term on your city council. In 1985, when we moved to Los Banas, our plan was to work here, live here, and raise our children here, God willing. I originally had no intention of entering politics, but the housing and population growth, accompanied by a lack of new school construction in the late nineties and early 2000s, changed all that. Classrooms were bulging at the seams, and we had to go to year-round school at the elementary and junior high levels. In 2005, I joined a group of teachers and advocates for education who came to the city council to find a way to build enough schools for our children. At one of these meetings, a developer stood up and volunteered to pay higher fees. Eventually, more of the developers did the same. Having learned from this experience, I ran for and was elected to city council in 2006. One of Los Banas' greatest challenges is the management of growth. The short supply, high demand ratio of homes in the Bay Area has made housing prices so high there that many working families move here so they can afford a nice place to live. To remedy this situation, one of my goals has been to facilitate the development of more well-paying jobs in Los Banas so that our citizens can work closer to home, spend more time with their families and friends, and keep more of their money in Los Banas, so it can be put back into the local economy to fund the programs our families need and deserve. I have supported keeping new... I have supported keeping new business fees down and streamlining the process for startups. I have worked to foster a stronger relationship between the city and those looking to create new industries like the new LED light bulb factory, IEM. Our most recent ambitious plan to promote local prosperity is the pursuance of a prodigious industrial park at the corner of 165 and Interstate 5, one that will employ over 10,000 people at build-out, a plan that includes a nine-to-10,000 square, a nine-foot airstrip, which, once completed, will enable the city to sell the present airport property for the construction of a regional medical center. My effort to live up to all my three-E commitments that I once pledged, education, entertainment, employment, and economics, I ran on that platform. And I produce and support local activities such as street shows and concerts to make sure that the entertainment is held up as well. Now I'm asking you to elect me once again. My positions and votes are in the public record.
Ray.
First of all, I want to thank the city and the facilitators here that provided this forum, and I want to thank each and every one of you that have attended here and participated. It's very important. I truly believe that people don't care how much you know until they see how much you care. And I totally believe that relationships, getting back and establishing, building, developing those relationships between the people and the city leadership here is so critical. Yeah, our city needs to grow, but I don't want to see a city so focused on growth that the people are forgotten. So to me, it's so important that we maintain those relationships. I would see, if elected, I would see that, I would, that on a quarterly basis, we would be out there. We wouldn't expect you to come in, even though we have meetings and things for you to be able to come in and see what's going on and hear and voice your concerns. But again, to me, it's so important, the heart and the voice of the people. So that would be one of my main focuses, is to get out there, maintain that contact with you on a regular basis, have an open-door policy. Because when we have that relationship and we come together in unity, there's going to be nothing that can stop us from doing what we need to do. So in voting for me, that is, that is my promise, is that I will represent your heart and your voice. That's so important. You cannot put a value on that. And also, focus on programs that are going to grow our children and not even, and even address our elderly, our citizens here, very variable. To me, they got the most experience, they got the most wisdom, and they're almost an untapped resource. And our youth, that's our next generation. And vote for me. I've got a heart for the youth. I've worked with them for 15 years. Thank you.
Fugio.
Well, folks, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. I thank the League of Women Voters, a very powerful and very needed organization. Folks, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to begin the process of change, changing the way to conduct business, and an opportunity to embrace the change that's coming. We need to be proactive and understand that if we don't manage to change, we're going to lose out of opportunities, lose opportunities of revenue, revenue which we can help our citizens, our senior citizens, which have provided so much, which have created the city that we love, that we cherish, and that we want to preserve. If we don't manage that change, we're going to lose those opportunities. And we're going to be reactive. Also, need to understand, need to have somebody who understands the basics of how our country came to be what it is today. We're in a lot of trouble nationally, state, and locally. A lot of policies have been enacted which hinder our ability to do the things we like to do. We've elected some individuals with no prior experience in business, do not understand how to balance a business, how to manage personnel, how to have a vision, five-year plan, 10-year plan, 25-year plan. I've never been aware of this. And we also have to understand that when tough decisions come, you have to be informed of all the options, measures. There is another option there, and that is the cumulative voting. Again, it's been practiced since the 80s, and it's a shame that we didn't know about this, that we didn't take the extra time. We have to have individuals who are not just going to accept what they're being told, but are going to do their due diligence, ask questions, look beyond the boundaries, look beyond their inner circle, and truly be a public servant. Thank you.
Scott. First off, I want to start out by thanking the Enterprise for sponsoring the event tonight along with the Merced County League of Women Voters, and also a special thank you to Ms. Stonegrove's Government Class. I know a lot of you folks at home didn't see them, but they were the ones that were fielding the questions, taking them back to the back room, and then bringing them up for Mr. Spivak to read to us. I also want to thank all of you for taking time to come and be a part of your government. For those folks that are in the room, for all of those that are watching, and those that'll be watching later, I feel like I'm a person that is responsive to you. If you come to me with questions, comments, or concerns, I'm not going to tell you that you're always going to like the answer, but I will get you what the official answer is. And I've had, I've had plenty of people that have come up, and they don't always like my thought process, maybe they don't like the decision that I made, but I promise you one thing, I make my decisions based on what I believe to be the best information possible. I don't know everything. If you want to ask me about cows, I feel like I'm pretty well-versed in that. Some things that come before city government, I don't claim to be an expert on it, but I tell you what I do do is, is I call people that are involved in that field and get their information. So I feel like I've run a business, I feel like I bring a different perspective to city council, and I'm going to ask you for your vote on Tuesday, November 4th. Don't forget out to vote. You, we all realize that there's people that died for us to have that right. So exercise your civic duty, come out and vote November 4th. And I want to thank you all for participating in tonight's forum. Thanks.
Just a few other closing remarks before we end. I want to, as several of the candidates have mentioned, thank the League of Women Voters, the wonderful people in the back, and especially Rachel here, who did a fantastic job on timing, the Los Banas Enterprise, Rick Spalding, who has been with the audio and video, and the students of Ms. Stonegrove's Pacheco High Government Class. I have a big hand for all of these people. Those of you who are unable, or other people unable, to see tonight's forum, it will be available for viewing beginning Friday on the Los Banas Enterprise website at www.losbanasenterprise.com. Please don't forget to vote on November 4th. And remember that next Tuesday, we'll have the last of the three forums at 7:00 here in the city council for the two mayoral candidates. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.